I call this meeting to order. This is the Commissioner's meeting of June 28, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Sussex County Administrative Center, the Commissioner's Meeting Room on One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Space?
Yeah.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent. Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
If we get a moment of silence and then salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wherefore is our public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, at a quick notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and the email such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following, the New Jersey Herald and the Star-Ledger, and is also posted on bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all your electronic devices. Five is going to be the approval agenda. There is a change to tonight's agenda. We are going to table the presentation recognizing social workers as representatives for this are unable to attend tonight. We'll move this to our next meeting on the 12th of July. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Mr. Hayden, have a second. Commissioner Space, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Number six is one proclamation. Dawn, you'll present this. We have Paige Lockrunner here to accept nicely in the front row. This is for National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. Student winners of the Office of Mosquito Control poster contest certificates. And there's first, second, and third, and it looks like you guys are all here. I like that. Very, very good. Well, congratulations to all. Dawn, queue her up.
This is one of the best parts of my liaison assignments. The Office of Mosquito Control actually is one of the more interesting reports that I get to present every week, and it's nice to do this proclamation. So whereas mosquitoes are more than a nuisance, they are vectors for disease infecting and killing more than 1 million people each year by spreading pathogens to people when they bite. And whereas the County of Sussex has been involved with mosquito control activities in response to mosquito borne diseases since the 1920s and 1930s. And whereas the Office of Mosquito Control is an integrated organization dedicated to providing mosquito suppression, mosquito borne disease surveillance, and public educational outreach for the enhancement of public health and quality of life in Sussex County. And whereas the Office of Mosquito Control Program and employees follow an integrated pest management approach that includes control methods by the most economical means with the least possible exposure to people, property, and the environment. And whereas the county has seen an increase of mosquito borne diseases over the last five years with the detection of mosquito borne diseases such as Jamestown Canyon Virus and Eastern Equine Encephalitis in mosquito populations. And whereas public awareness and cooperation are critical to effective mosquito control in Sussex County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize June 18th to the 24th, 2023, as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week in Sussex County and encourage all residents and civic organizations to celebrate the contributions of all mosquito control personnel and their daily efforts to improve our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. By order of the Board of County Commissioners, Chris Carney, Commissioner Director, Herbert Yardley, Deputy Director, and Dawn Fantasia, Jill Space, and William Hayden, Commissioners.
Thank you. And our contestant winners, I'll read the names out. First was Ian Moran, second was Samantha Ellison, and third was Ben Branca. You guys are... Here? You're here, okay. So you're all different, all right. I was kind of thinking you were all over there. So if you guys want to come up and if you want to say anything, you don't have to by all means. But if you want to come up, we'll take a picture. I know Paige probably wants to speak, right?
Yeah.
Anybody? Oh, you got somebody. Christine?
Would you do this first? Sure. Well, do you guys after this? I wanted to give you special records.
Thank you. I better just say.
Yeah.
Just a little quick. Thank you to the Commissioners for providing us this proclamation tonight. I can speak for myself and on behalf of the rest of the mosquito staff that we are grateful for the recognition and appreciation of our efforts and the work. As the proclamation said, mosquitoes are lethal and deadly creature of the world. Every year one of the people whose lives is suffering from disease. Two take home messages that I want to illustrate tonight would be the importance of mosquito control in the U.S. Without it, we wouldn't be able to enjoy our lives like we do. However, every day we face a threat of newly emerged, emerging mosquito borne diseases such as locally transmitted malaria cases. Texas and Florida currently dealing with these cases. Have not necessarily happened because of the lack of mosquito control, but because of other threats such as global international travel. But further spread of an infection may not occur because of good mosquito control efforts and support. And secondly, a mosquito control program is successful because of the staff. I would also like to personally thank the mosquito staff here and for those who couldn't make it tonight, for the mosquito staff, for all their hard work and passion for this program. Sussex mosquito would not be what it is today if we didn't have such hardworking individuals who are truly dedicated and who really value the public health prestige of mosquito control. From working long days with hiking long distances to inspect mosquito sites, to setting and collecting traps day in and day out, and Eric, who IDs every mosquito that was brought back to lab and does a great job with the disease surveillance program. And then on top of that, he's still unwilling to work at night for trucks, trucks, and our residents from the threat of disease. Our mosquito staff put a lot of effort into this program every day, all day, to serve our residents from the threat of mosquito borne diseases. So this proclamation is for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige, as always.
Okay. So I had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to, we did a poster contest with our high school graphic card student. And Vernon and Hope Hackon High School participated. And tonight we're going to present certificates for the winners. It was a mosquito prevention for tractable being poster. And we had great entries. It was very hard to pick a first, so we actually did a first, second, and third. And they are here tonight. I'll do the third place winner, which was Benjamin Branca from Hope Hackon High School.
Paige, should we have their artwork anywhere?
I can put it on our website.
Exactly. Perfect.
Sure. Second place goes to Samantha Ellison from Vernon High School. And finally, our winner, also from Vernon High School, Ian Moran.
Congratulations, everybody. Appreciate that. Yeah, if we can get that up on the website and put your art up there so everybody can see in the county?
Yes.
Good. Thank you much. Thank you, Dawn. Number seven is our public hearing. We have a final adoption of ordinance 23-05. At a regular meeting held on June 14, 2023, we introduce our first reading for the following ordinance, which was advertised in New Jersey Herald issue of June 20, 2023, together with a notice of public hearing stating it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. Amending speed limits established along County Route 519 under resolution entitled, Establishing Speed Limits on Route 519 North in the Town of Newton dated April 8, 1975. Take a motion that this public hearing be opened?
So moved.
Mr. Space, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passed. Is anyone present to be heard regarding this particular ordinance? I see none. Take a motion that the public hearing be closed?
So moved.
Mr. Hayden, have a second. Commissioner Space, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. All right, now I need a motion that this ordinance be finally adopted.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Second.
Commissioner Space, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. All right, now I need a motion that this resolution be finally adopted and authorize the clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted and also post the same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center.
So moved.
Fantasia, have a second. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion before we take a roll? All right, roll call.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent. Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right, next is our public session from the floor. This public session, for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item, please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. And a motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Would you like to speak? That way we can get you out of here. Perfect.
All right, so good evening, thank you for having me. As we continue going on...
Just state your name.
Yeah, state your name. Yeah, just for the record.
So last time we were here, we were talking about fixes being in place and things running smoothly. I confirm that over the last weeks, things are still operating the way they should be. So systems are fixed, benefits are paying the way they should be. So as of June 12, we are 100% confident that the benefits are now the way they should be. Make their payment the way they should be. There should be zero, like, I don't want to say zero issues because there's always
Always an issue.
going to be an issue, but issues that were happening before are no longer going to happen. As of Monday, our Horizon Advocate Program is going to be live. As confirmed, retirees are getting letters in the mail that were approved going out and notifying them of the advanced service model where they can now directly call into Blue Cross. And Blue Cross will work with the HRA vendor together on conference calls to fix their issues rather than having to come to the triage of what we've been doing the past couple times. That service is also available to active employees. All right, so every member of the County of Sussex has access to that program. We just kind of started with the retirees to notify them, and then the active employees are going to be getting letters, then the first, I would say, by the middle of the month they'll have, they're going to be able to help. By all means, if they call into customer service, they'll be routed to that program. They may not realize it, but they're getting this letter.
And we actually receive copies of the letters.
Very good, yeah. And we'll put that out, that way everybody knows, the retirees know, just hammer down with some emails.
All right, so as of on Monday, we're probably have a better grasp of 2022 issues. So the way we're looking at it is that you have problems that occurred in 2022, but in 2023. Now each year was indeed involves happening in 2022, involves happening in 2023, plus you also have a benefit reset. So come January 1st, everything started fresh all over again, which made things a little bit more complex. So we're tackling 2022 first. I would say by the middle of next week, we're going to have a full blown action plan on what's happening to resolve all of 2022. We just completed our audit on our end. We sent over all the data further to the HRA vendor on their end. And then by Monday, Monday, Tuesdays are holidays. So by Wednesday, we should know exactly what they're going to have to do to fix all the accounts. All right, so I would say within the next couple weeks, you're going to start having all your 2022 outstanding issues resolved. So that's going to be... Then we're going to restart to tackle 2023. It's going to be a similar process, not as robust. You're probably going to see a lot more over payments that are happening in 2022 and a lot more reconciliations happening in 2023. So as the program launched in 2022, what was happening is double over accumulating over at a higher amount than what we need to have around support. So claims are going to be higher than they were. That's probably going to be the biggest shift if we're going to resolve.
Does anybody have a commissioner, or question rather? Any commissioner have a question? Good.
Now that you say that, we're getting ready to go into September, which is the, going into the bidding side. So over expenditures in '22 would influence our claim history on a negative way. So are these claims going to be reversed so that that's not part of our exposure in the, in the, in your utilization?
So it's actually going to have a reverse effect. It's actually going to make the amounts that the member was responsible for less, putting more claim history in there versus deductible history. That makes sense. But right now, if you have higher deductible amounts, you're less claim dollars, but you're going to be shrinking the deductible amount to make them claim dollars higher. It's going to have a bit of a reverse. But you put your talk in a small number in the overall grand scheme, things in terms of, you're talking, you feel anywhere between 12, 13 million premium, 11 million with some claims in that, maybe you feel 100,000 in the claim differential. So the percentage is really not going to move a needle one way or another. But it's all going to be accounted for in the claim data, and everything's going to be audited, tracked, and all of that available.
Did, with the Horizon, were they able to go down to fleet after our union meeting? They were supposed to go down.
Have you, no, actually, they made arrangements, I think, for transit. We saw transit workers here today.
Okay, they came up. Okay, perfect. You met with some transit people.
There were a couple of transit.
Yeah, they had, they were having problems with getting off because they have to keep their schedule, and it's tough for them, so.
Yeah.
I'm glad they came today. That worked out.
Today was, you know, it's a trend that, it's odd because, you know, you know, the retirees have had a lot of issues, a lot of issues, but again, today there was more active employees, again, than there were retirees. Obviously, the retirees have a little more complex issues and takes a little bit more, but the general consensus is we've seen a lot of the active employees, a lot of the similar questions of getting bills, why do I get this bill? Okay, was it not paid?
Well, at least we're giving them the answers they're looking for.
Correct.
That's our job, to make sure they get their answers. So we appreciate what you're doing. It seems like the people we were dealing with before at Horizon were not as inept as you.
Irresponsible.
Or, I'm trying to be real nice about it, to be honest with you.
I think you mean adept.
What we're going to do with the active employees to get them comfortable with the plan. Because I was asking in front of page questions of, you know, what caused this issue? My coworker told me to just ignore the bill that I got. Don't get a first bill, just throw it out, don't worry about it. I'm like, do you know why? They didn't, you know, so it's like they don't understand how the plan works. Because I think if they understand how the plan works, then they'll know that that bill was just because their provider CPOB, and then there's a payment that's going to be paid. It's almost like they're not grasping that.
Yeah, that's what Horizon, when Horizon came here and introduced the plan to everybody to begin with, that's what they did say. They said, ignore that first bill. If you get a second one, then you need to be concerned.
And I want to try and, if there's time allowance or if there's a way to time through the process, whether it be through pages, webex, or something, to try and go through, to know some bullet to date, to date if they're getting on board.
Good.
Most people don't know to ignore the first bill.
Yeah.
Okay, well, perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll see you, we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public? All right, motion to close the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries.
Commissioner Director, is there something, like, it is getting progressively hotter and awful here?
It is.
So that door's shut, there's not a window open, that's not flowing? Like, what's happening here?
The only problem...
One interferes with the microphones.
Is that...
Okay, so can, should we be opening windows, opening that back door? Like, it's...
They shut the door because they're allowing us to.
No, no, I get it, I get it. But can we open these windows?
When are we getting our commission flags?
I think it's been seven to 10 weeks, I think it was.
Parts are hard to get.
If I jump out the window, yes, I don't have a part falling, so.
I've been there, it doesn't work.
All right, number nine is Commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner Hayden.
All righty, the Sussex County Library System kicked off its summer reading program with popular events, Saturday, June 24, 2023. The Library System celebrated the start of the 2023 Summer Reading Program with fun and educational events at each of its six branches. Attendees at the Dorothy Henry Franklin Sussex Wanted Branches were treated to an energetic educational presentation from Eyes of the Wild, including close up personal encounters with animals, teaching respect for our environment and all creatures that live in it. Children and families at the Dennis, Louise Child, and Main Branch experienced wonders of the universe, inflatable planetarium on the Peril Observatory. Excited participants were able to learn about our solar system, planets, stars, and constellations while seeing them up close. The Sussex County Library System extends its deepest gratitude to the dedicated staff, enthusiastic volunteers, and community partners who contributed their time and resources to make the Summer Reading Kickoff event successful. Sussex County Library System looks forward to a memorable 2023 Summer Reading Program. And throughout the summer, the Sussex County Library System will be holding a series of events which will engage all from reading to crafts and so on. You can find out about these events at sussexcountylibrary.org.
Good? Thank you. Yeah, that was very good.
Quick?
That was very quick. You speak quicker than I do. Commissioner Space, you're up.
Division of Social Services Food Drive to help feed Sussex County residents in need. Shoprite locations in Newton, Sparta, and Franklin will be collecting food on June 30, July 1, and July 2 to benefit the food pantry at the Sussex County Division of Social Services. iHeart Media, 103.7 WNNJ, and 102.3 WSUS Personalities will be on location at the Franklin Shoprite, 270 Route 23 in Franklin on Saturday, July 1, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM to spearhead the drive. Donations will help replenish the shelves at the Social Services Food Pantry to assist families and individuals in need in addition to supporting local food pantries. Social Services has been experiencing a tremendous increase in the demand for food assistance. This increase is most likely due to the temporary emergency allotments for recipients of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, ending in March, and the increasing cost to purchase food. The Social Services Food Pantry has assisted just over 8,000 people so far this year, compared to assisting 4,000 people during the same timeframe last year. Children are home during the summer, which will make the need even greater to provide nutritious meals all day, every day. Although the donations have remained steady with the need doubling, Social Services is grateful and looking forward to a successful food drive. This drive will help support the increased need for many individuals and families within our community. If anyone is in need of food for themselves or for their family, they can stop by the Division of Social Services located at 83 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. Food or pet donations are accepted during these hours, or special arrangements can be made for after hours donations by calling 973-383-3600. I just want to thank the county staff that will be giving up their Fourth of July weekend to help with this food drive and how important it is to feed, you know, our residents here in the county. Okay, next, the $10,000 grant for equipment for the fire departments and first responders. I went in and saw Elka today, and we have had 23 applications out of the 42. And it's due to close on Friday, and Elka said, if, okay, with the other commissioners, we could extend it for a month, and I'd like to see if we can extend it for a month. And I personally plan on following up with each and every department that hasn't applied and first aid squad that hasn't applied. And hopefully by the end of the month, we can come back here and say that everyone has applied. So, you know, that is one thing, as long as you guys are all good with extending it a month.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I appreciate you doing that. Took a whole lot of horns on that one.
Yeah. And then we have another ARPA meeting coming up. Ron organized one, and Commissioner Fantasia and I will be sitting in on that. And we are going to try to figure out what to do with the remainder of the ARPA funds to benefit the residents of Sussex County. And last week, I attended the Senior Olympics, and what a great event. I was actually shocked.
Did you win?
I'm not a senior yet. Chris, I still, I still have quite a few years to go. But I was pretty impressed. I would say there were probably like over 100 and something people.
I think 250.
250?
I think it was over.
Wow.
What's the normal turnout on that?
This was one of the largest.
This is one of the largest.
And it was a rainy day. I thought for sure when Christina texted me that it was going to be canceled, but no, 250. So they all were having a great time, and a lot of our staff was there, you know, overseeing it. It was wonderful. And, I don't know, did you, did you want to hear goals or save it for next time?
Goals?
Remember the last time?
Yeah, we'll do that on finished business. Yeah, unfinished business, so that's okay.
Sounds good, then I'll just leave it at that. I had a busy week, but I'll just, nobody wants to hear it.
There you go. No, I really appreciate that, going to the fire departments. That's, I know that's, you have good connections there, and that was, that was good that you thought about that, because I didn't, I didn't think about that. And Ron was starting on the impression that we couldn't extend that, so getting an extra money.
And I went to the Chiefs Association meeting at first, but I think that maybe not all the chiefs are the ones that handle the paperwork. So I plan on following up with the presidents of the departments and the municipalities.
Perfect, cool. It's odd that you're trying to give money away and it's like...
I know, I know. That's, that's a lot of them.
Yeah.
We have 23 out of 42.
Yes.
So...
One and a half, yeah. Well, thank you. Commissioner Fantasia?
Thank you. I'm going to start with the Division of Health. Sussex County Division of Health is offering COVID-19 vaccinations. There is one clinic on a walk-in basis located Brookside Terrace, 33 Mill Street in Newton on Thursday, July 6, from 10 to 12. Also, public health nursing continues to provide weekly homebound vaccinations for those who are requesting such. The Office of Mosquito Control, the report on mosquito borne disease surveillance, a total of 334 pools of adult mosquitoes have been submitted for mosquito borne disease testing, all which are negatives. That's excellent news. Samples from 21 municipalities were submitted for the testing of the four mosquito borne diseases that we have been targeting, Jamestown Canyon Virus, Eastern Equine Encephalitis, West Nile Virus, and St. Louis Encephalitis. You can check the Mosquito Controlled Disease Surveillance website to find out the up to date results when these samples come back at sussex nj.us backslash mosquito. It's easy enough to remember. The county has been receiving significant rainfall over this past week, and it's going to continue. What that means is increased uptick in mosquito activity, mosquito pools, larvae, et cetera. If you are experiencing an increase in mosquito activity near your home, or you see any standing water, or suspect any issues, please contact the Office of Mosquito Control, 973-940-5255, to alert the staff that they need to come out and check out those areas and perhaps service them. The Biology and Control Display is circulating, and in the month of July, it will be visiting Byram, Sparta, Hardeston, and Hope Hackon Borough. So we know that that's making the rounds through the county for everybody to see. It has mosquito control biology brochures and pamphlets, also New Jersey tick identification and prevention items, things to remove ticks from your dog, things to remove ticks from you. So it's a nice setup they have there. This past Sunday, I was pleased to be invited to deliver the welcome to Sussex County at the 74th Annual High Point Memorial Services in the afternoon up at the Veterans Memorial at High Point State Park. Each year, the American Legion from across the entire state of New Jersey gathers and they hold a memorial service. We had from all over the state, I mean, Monmouth County was represented, a fair amount in North Jersey, but I saw Monmouth County, Atlantic County, like, people travel from quite a distance to come to participate that, in that. And there is a Department Vice Commander in New Jersey, Ellis Marples, who's a resident of Hardeston, and he heads that, and the Franklin Band also performs. So that was really a beautiful day. It was well attended and really nice weather. Couple updates from District 24. They brought to our attention Hope Hackong Borough sanitary sewer installation. That was the New Jersey Eye Bank and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection helped improve the infrastructure of Hope Hackong Borough. So they recently completed clean water improvements that are being financed with almost half a million dollars through those programs. The Water Quality Restoration Project qualified for principal forgiveness for half the project[1782.94] Uh, the Water Quality Restoration Project qualified for principal forgiveness for half the project cost totaling two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, so the total savings for the project altogether for the borough of Hope Hat Kong was three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars over a twenty-year term of the loan. So, basically, seventy-seven percent of the cost was picked up by these two programs at the state. It involved the construction of sanitary sewer system and was designed to address water quality and health concerns posed by private septic systems and properties on Hudson Avenue abutting Lake Hope Hat Kong. Project improved the water quality for local residents of the lake. Borough installed approximately two thousand three hundred linear feet of new two-point-five-inch PVC sanitary sewer pipe and installed service and grinder pumps at thirty-two residential homes on Hudson Avenue. So, that was a big success there, uh, for Lake Hope Hat Kong. That, uh, that's nice to share. Um, now, next, a little bit of information. We know that the budget, it's, it's hot season down in Trenton, you know, it, it needs to be, uh, the budget needs to have the vote uh, by June thirtieth, and there's been a lot of activity in committees, uh, down in Trenton. Now, uh, one of the bills that was shut down, um, that came out was a proposed bill for a parent's bill of rights. And that was S two four eight three, and that was summarily, uh, denied, uh, by the Democrats on the floor, which was a, a bit of a problem. As you know, B A G, Matt Platten, and Angelica McMullen, uh, who is the, uh, Department of Education head, uh, released a joint statement offering additional guidance to schools about, uh, different curriculum. Uh, and the New Jersey Republican State Committee released a statement in response to this joint statement of, uh, the Commissioner of Education and the State's Attorney General. Um, it's in a response to the new law against discrimination guidance for schools. So, I'm gonna read the statement to you. "The new guidance from the Murphy administration is yet another assault on parents' rights in our schools. Murphy and the Democrats in the legislature pushed through age-inappropriate materials for our kids during the height of COVID, then added insult to injury by threatening a loss of funds or a state takeover for non-compliant schools. Murphy administration is now suing school districts that back parental notification about some of the most sensitive matters that involve their children. The new guidance is the administration's latest heavy-handed response to the parents and school boards that have taken a stand against these absurd new policies." This November, um, and it goes on and on to be a little political, and I don't want to use this as a, as a soapbox for, uh, for politics, but basically, it is in, uh, strict, strict opposition against some of these new guidelines that are forcing, uh, certain policies on schools when it comes to sex education, when it comes to curriculum, and when it comes to parental notification for health concerns regarding children. So, um, at our next meeting, I, I have something that I'm gonna send to Christina, uh, a draft of a resolution in opposition to these new guidelines that were released by the state of New Jersey, um, and also in opposition to the statement from Attorney General Platten and, uh, Angela McMullen. And, uh, I hope that we can all take a look at it, uh, and then we can take some action at our next meeting regarding that, because this just gets more and more outrageous every day when it comes to parental rights and what we lose.
And that's all. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Um, update on D P W. Uh, project is dead and diseased tree removal. Obviously, note, you guys see a lot of dead trees on our roads and our right-of-ways that are taking down lines. Uh, certainly saw some after this past storm. This contract is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This was ARPA funds. Midhurst Tree Care will begin work on July fifth to remove all the dead trees along various county routes. Uh, just some of those routes are County Route five sixty-five, Ross's Corner and Wantage, uh, five sixty-five Glenwood Martin State, Glenwood Martin Station Road in Vernon, uh, County Route five fifteen, Vernon-Stalkham Road in Vernon as well, County Route six twenty-seven, Branchville-Lawson's Corner in Frankfurt, County Route five seventeen, McAfee-Green's Corner in Vernon, and County Route six thirteen, Andover Mohawk Road in Andover Township. So, if you see, uh, Midhurst around, that's what they're doing. Hopefully, that'll help with the power lines when we have storms. Uh, County of Engineering, uh, Sussex County, the Division of Engineering, I'm sorry, um, is nearing completion of traffic safety study for County Route six thirteen, also known as Andover Mohawk Road, East Shore Trail, Andover Borough, and Andover, Byram, and Sparta Townships. They're doing a bunch of, uh, they did a bunch of studies on speed limits. Majority of them are going down by five miles an hour. Again, for people that like to speed, uh, slow down a little bit. Putting in some new warning signs, installation pedestrian crosswalks, installation four-way stop signs, pedestrian warning signage will be placed in some areas, and reduction of lane width and installation, installation of wider edges along East Shore Trail portion of six thirteen. Um, that's all I have on my reports. I do want to say, um, we had our second, Commissioners Face and myself had our second annual mayor's luncheon. I thought it went rather well. June is probably not the best time to do it, since there's a lot of vacations and, and what, whatnot, but, uh, about eight mayors there, we had very good conversation about shared services. Um, shared services obviously provides just that, shared services. Um, basically using what a municipality has to help out another municipality, and it, it saves a taxpayer. Um, just, for example, we spoke about, uh, sweeper, road sweepers. Some towns have them. They're very expensive to have, uh, and to help out a town, neighboring town, or encompass towns such as, uh, Branchville Borough, as Frankfurt encompasses Branchville, it helps them out. So, it was a very good conversation. We are going to meet again probably in September. Um, we will have the Director of the D L G S, Jackie Suarez, um, to kind of go over that. There's a lot of grants out there. Leek Granted, one of them. Um, basically, they'll pay somebody to, to run your shared service program, um, for, for the year, and, and hopefully to continue that, uh, again, to save some taxpayers, uh, you know, money. So, that's all I have for tonight. Uh, number ten is the approval of the consent agenda. There is none. Number eleven is the approval of minutes. This is from our regular meeting, June fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. Now, a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting?
Still moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? On our favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain, carries. Twelve is appointments and resignations. There are none. Thirteen is resolutions. Uh, we have, can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through S?
Still moved.
Commissioner Space, got a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent. Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Number fourteen is awards of contracts, change orders, or bid. Uh, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public's interest. Again, a motion to adopt resolutions A through H.
Still moved.
Commissioner Space, got a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent. Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right, fifteen is financial. We have three different, uh, bills lists. We're gonna separate all three. We have A, B, and C. Uh, first is Resolution A. It's payment of bills, bills list from June eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion to pay the bills list A?
Still.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second?
Second.
Space, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent. Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right, Resolution B is payment of bills list B, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to pay the bills list B.
Still moved.
Commissioner Hayden, second. Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Abstain.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent. Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right, uh, Bills List C, uh, payment of Bills List C from June eighth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to pay the Bills List C.
Still moved.
Commissioner Space?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent. Director Carney?
Abstain.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right, sixteen is personnel, uh, personnel agenda of six twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Still moved.
Commissioner Space, got a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Yardley is absent. Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
All right, seventeen, the administrative report.
Oh, just real briefly, I just want to illustrate how much fun we have here during the day here at the administrative building. There, outside that window, you'll see a foundation that used to have a, a light post on it. Well, we had a resident this week decide to make our walkway here the new entrance to Trinity Street. So, instead of taking a right at the light, they took a right here in, uh, in between the culverts here and took out the pole. So, there you go. Anyway, uh, real briefly, I, we haven't talked about the O E M Center for a while, so I wanted to give another update on that. The, uh, week of seven, uh, to tenth of July, they will have all their new roof units being installed. They have cranes there putting in the new H V A system. The week of the seventeenth, July seventeenth, all the new furniture and installation of that furniture will happen. And then there on the week of the twenty-fourth, they're moving back in.
Oh, very good.
Pretty quick. Put a bow on that.
That was very quick, yeah.
It was. And the remediation's done. The week of the seventh as well, they're having, um, servo come in and do a complete sanitations of all the bathrooms and the, and the, and the areas that have been dormant for a while. They didn't have to get reme, remediated, we're gonna re-sanitize all that. And in the week of the twenty-fourth, we, we opened the doors.
And what, your best guess, and I'll hold you to it, but what percentage of the insurance cover on that?
Oof, right now, we're upwards of almost a hundred grand on that. I, we won't know that till, it's, we got a small deductible on it, but, um, Keith has done everything he can to, to pinch every inch of that insurance money to cover it. He has.
Okay, no, I was just curious.
We'll know more about that soon.
Anything else?
That is it.
That is it, all right, thank you. Um, got these numbers a little screwed up. I'll just skip the eighteen then?
Yeah.
Right to nineteen? Nineteen, County Council?
Yes, uh, each commissioner should have received a copy of our council's report. If you have any questions, um, let us know.
Perfect. All right, so unfinished business, we'll go back to Commissioner Space at early. At our last meeting, we brought up new business to set some goals for this year moving forward. Um, what we can do, if you don't have them with you, Bill, do you have?
I have two, but I'd rather have it in a format where we're.
Yeah, so what I'm thinking, instead of, um, consistently, you know, we might have the same goals. What we can do is maybe this week, and, and take your time, listen, I'm not looking forward to it. I just wanted to set the ball rolling. So, what we can do is just email them over to Christina. She could put them in a spreadsheet. We could all look at them again, maybe we'll bring them for the next meeting. We could look at them together, have any comments, we could talk about it again at unfinished business, and then we could put forth and execute.
What I would suggest too is taking from, uh, our reorganization meeting, when we all spoke and outlined what our goals were. I think we should take them also and cross-check and see if others have picked up the ball where, you know what I mean, like some were crossover, where perhaps it was a goal that we had set for the board, but it was something that we did not directly do, and then there were new goals that happened, right? I mean, with, with the inception of the ARPA money, for instance, going to the fire departments and rescue departments, that wasn't something that we had decided definitively that was going out, right, when we reworked the beginning of January? And the fact that it's done and implemented, you know, and now being extended. So, I just, I would like to be as efficient as possible to compare from January to what's been done through the budget season, you know, moving forward.
Okay, good.
And Commissioner, that's a, that is very consistent with what we're doing in the operations with the, the week of June tenth. We're rolling out the budget plans to the departments, to give them their budget packages to set their goals as well. So, we want to be consistent with, with the, with what the commissioners are putting out. We're all going in the same direction.
It's odd. It reminds me almost of school, where, you know, our, our calendar year and our terms run January, but really, when we set the goals and do our budget, it starts in the summer.
Yep.
And we start meeting in August, so it's odd. I just want to make sure that the goals that we set in January, which technically is in the middle of the game, are not conflicting. We're finished by the time we set the summer goals, you know, into the fall.
Lord, it's been a lot. It's happened since January of last year to now, particularly with ARPA.
Yes, okay, anybody else with unfinished? All right, twenty-one's new business. Is there anybody has any new business?
Yes. Um, before the Commissioners is a resolution authorizing the county to convey property, which is known as parcel fifty-eight, to the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Um, I don't, I don't know the extent of the history. I just know this goes back several years in which the D O T was attempting to acquire and purchase this property. Um, what this resolution would do is to not only convey the property to the D O T, but also, um, allow our county administrator to sign the necessary documentation for county to accept payment. That said, I think Ron can provide further information regarding this.
The, this has been on the table for years. It was originally done by resolution to vacate the property. We were gonna give it to the D O T, and it just sat in no man's land, and, uh, a couple, God, a couple months ago, I dusted it all off, and I called the D O T, and they said, no, you guys can't give it to us. We have to buy it. So, I said.
So, you said a million dollars?
Yes.
And they said, okay.
I wish it was that much, but I said, that's fine, okay, darn, what a problem to have. So, they did a market evaluation. They got all the convenience documents together. We were ready to close on the deal, and it came down to what authority I had to sign or not. So, this resolution, the property's already been declared gone a long time ago. I just want to get the money. So, this, this conveys my ability to sign all the necessary documents to get them checked. That's as simple as it gets.
All right, you, um, everybody has this. Would you like me to read it into the record?
Read into the record.
Yeah, read into the record. Everybody has one, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Transportation has expressed a need to acquire certain property within the Sussex County, specifically the property designated as block fifteen point zero one, lot two two six, in Byram Township, also known as parcel fifty-eight, currently owned by the County of Sussex. And therefore, Sussex County has agreed to convey parcel fifty-eight to the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex as followed. One, the Sussex County Administrator or his designee is hereby authorized to sign and execute the necessary documents for the conveyance of parcel fifty-eight to the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Two, Sussex County is hereby authorized to accept payment from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the conveyance of parcel fifty-eight. All right, so I will make a motion to have Ron fill out any paperwork he needs to, to get this done. Have a second?
Second, no.
Second, I'll second.
Second, Commissioner, uh, Space. All right, uh, do a voice vote? Well, I guess not exchange of money, right?
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, roll, roll, roll call, please.
Uh, Commissioner Hayden?
Abstain.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Dep, uh, Director Carney, sorry.
Yeah, uh, yes.
Uh, Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
And Deputy Director Yardley is absent.
All right.
That will happen tomorrow.
Very, very good. Cashers check?
Whatever the punt is, boss.
Good enough. Twenty-two, public session from the floor. The public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
Still moved.
Second?
Commissioner Hayden, Secretary, Commissioner Fantasia, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain, carries. Is there anybody for non-agenda? Come on up. Come on down. With a fortune?
Price is right.
Right, same thing. Just state your name in this.
Helen Heckman, and I, I'm from Newton. Um, and I'm here to, um, once again inquire about the progress, um, that I've been making to lead into the donation of the Dennis Library to the County of Sussex. Um, I don't know whether there has been any progress at all at particular areas. I wanted to ask, um, by my count, Newton, the Township of Newton, Andover, uh, Andover Township, Green Township, Hampton, and Freedon have all sent resolutions in support of the Dennis Library renovation. Have they all been received by the commissioners?
I'm sure about Green.
Okay, um.
Green?
Not Green?
I don't remember seeing something coming from Green.
But.
Um, has there been any progress towards Sussex County accepting the donation of the Dennis Library, uh, deed from the Newton Library Association?
How about you do this, finish everything you're gonna say, and then at the, and, well, I will give you a brief answer of where we're at. But go ahead, finish it with your questions and your statement. I don't want to take your, I don't want to take your time.
The deed is, um, uh, you know, it belongs to the, uh, Library Association until we take possession of it. And I wondered if there was any progress in that transfer of the deed. Um, any, uh, progress towards renewing or revising the original grant? I know a form was sent from the library director to, I believe it was Mr. Tuck, and, um, it said that you could submit to the, uh, the state for the grant information. and, um, and that you could submit to the, uh, the state for the grant information. Um, you know, if there's going to be a revision or anything like that. So, um, I wonder if that has been, uh, received and processed or anything like that. Um, has there been any progress consulting with architects about a revision of the original plan, uh, to make it more cost-effective? Any other comments? And that's pretty much what I wanted to know.
Okay, so I'll make a brief statement. Our attorney, um, is working on the new resolution, because we need to put a resolution together before we can ask for any kind of money, whether it differ, whether it's cheaper by 10%, or more expensive by 10%. So that has to be done. As when it comes to the Dennis Library, taking possession of that, it would be a bad business move to take possession of something that we can't fund. So until that funding comes down, then we can make a move. But until then, we can't do anything with that building.
So it all comes down to the attorney?
No, not necessarily. We have other people working on it, figuring out what the costs are gonna be. Inflation went up for that building, I mean, we have some buildings went up 40%, literally 40%. So until we get those numbers, but a resolution has to be passed here before we can go back to the state and ask for more money, a change of the scope of work, and so on and so forth. But taking possession of that building without having the funds to do it is not good business.
The architects have been in the building, we're waiting on their response back. We need to, a couple of different items out of there, we need mechanicals and roof architectural drawings back, and particularly the costing of that. And we can't do anything administratively here until we know all those costs, because we won't know what to tell the state to ask for. We won't know until we get those in. So we don't have those back from our architect yet. It's probably gonna be a week or two before that, that comes in. If not more, they're very busy right now, our architects are all slammed right now. But they are, they have been in the building.
This conversation wouldn't even need to be taking place if inflation wasn't as high as it was. This is kind of out of our hands, like this was a dumb deal, it was passed, I mean, you spoke about before my time, I know, uh, Commissioner Fantasia was here, but... It's, it's not our fault.
No, 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 I understand, I believe you, I understand, it's just a...
All right, thank you.